Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Swanee County Board of County Commissioners meeting for February 21st, 2023. At this time, I'd like to get Commissioner Perkins to give the invocation and Commissioner Mobley to pledge. If you all stand.
Father God, in the name of Jesus, we come with God's fullness on our grace. Come, God, thank you for the life of this room. We thank you about how you blessed us and watched over the kids, took care of them, our family, God, took care of this county, God. We thank you, God, for being blessed to be in this great nation, still in the United States. Thank you, God, for everyone that is here, dear God, as you blessed them, just their home, their families, and God has been blessed this board with your God, every department that God have, and we did it through, and we were able to, God, to bless this community to have a fruitful life, that God here in Swanee County, live before. And God pray with us upon us in Christ your Prayer. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Moving along the item number one, approval of minutes for the February 7th, 2023 regular board meeting. Is there any discussion or can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll pull an item number 15 for discussion on the consent agenda. So we'll be considering items two through 14, two through 14. There are motions for approval, there are discussions. Done, Mr. Chairman. Motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 15, authorization to advertise bids for repairs to the Supervisory Elections Office, budget impact, non-budgeted item. Mr. Scott.
You need to pull this one up. Excuse me. If you want to move forward with this, identify funding source for this project. My...
Thank you.
Thank you. We need to find a funding source for this item. This is a project that was done back a couple of years ago, Supervisory Elections. We found some deficiencies in where we did things and to make things right, we need to have a funding source, do what we did, make it, make repairs. Mr. Durham, if you have any questions about what we found or anything, support documentation of the packet on that sort of thing, but if you have to ask your questions, you know, so.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members. Do you have any questions to me on this project?
Mr. Chairman. Thanks for calling, Mr. Durham.
Sure.
What was the cause of this?
The apparent cause after consulting an architect on this was a moisture barrier vapor being not installed in the beginning and the rear door of the building not being sealed and allowing excessive moisture into the building. It actually caused decay of the overlayment of a 3X plywood through the entire rear of the building.
This, this rehabilitation project, how long ago did we do this?
About two, two and a half years ago, I believe. I'd have to go back and look at the date, but that's approximately the time.
Do you recall, because I do not, that the total investment we made on this rehab project?
No, sir. I could not tell you what that was. That was actually handled by the administrator at the time. Those funds didn't come through my...
Uh, good.
Those funds didn't come through.
Go ahead.
I was just trying to recall that I'm...
Sure.
On the hill of that, I don't remember. Did we, did we do perform that work, our labor, our employees?
Yes, sir. Ronnie and his crew did that as directed, yes.
Mr. Chairman. I believe outside source did the drywall.
Yes. What the whole job was done, there were some things beefed out, like the ductwork was installed outsourced, the drywall was outsourced, painting, I believe, interior was outsourced.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Lee. Was a, did we, it'd be inside the city, wouldn't we have pulled a permit for that?
Yes, it was a permit pulled.
And who was the, was that pulled by us or was that pulled by?
That was pulled by the county. We had to pull the city permit, but it was pulled by the county.
So who was the contractor of record?
Randy Harris was the contractor.
Under, under us or?
Under his license.
Under his license.
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
I don't, Mr. Chairman, I don't recall, Mr. Perkins may be more worse than this, but I don't recall the dollar figure on, on this particular, but I believe it was in excess of six, six figures. Would you agree with that?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, this was well under six figures, the job, entire job. You got a generator on the back of the six figures, so they got down into the six figures.
Yeah, I mean, I'm talking about that. I'm sure. Sorry. And here we are, two and a half years later, looking at potentially 60,000, potentially.
And that, that's barring any unforeseen as we go in there and demo that out. It's a possibility. I hope that we don't find that, we haven't seen any other evidence of that, we're just going by what we are looking at today. Because all the flooring has to come up, all the subflooring has to come up, and it's very possible that six, eight inches of sheetrock has to be pulled out of the entire model of the building to deal with that. There's, it, it can grow.
I, I did, Mr. Chairman, I did stop by there. I don't know if you guys have a problem, but I did stop over there last, last week, I believe, to tour. For such a pretty building behind the doors, it's, we're tearing everything up. It looks pretty rough.
Well, if we, if we spend the 60 grand, is this gonna happen again or is this gonna fix the problem?
According to the architect that we consulted on this, this should take care of our problems.
Yes, sir.
Who?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Robler.
Wouldn't a contractor on record be responsible for it, the workmanship of it, or the way it's put out? I pulled a record and it said that the job valuation was around 250,000, I pulled from the city the other day. Just more than, just a substantial job, but seems like the contractor on record should ultimately be responsible for his work, to be directed, to be done in a certain manner or a certain way, if he's over the job.
Mr. Chairman. So Perkins, what you want to say, yes, they are, but they probably have to give a year, give warrants on their work, but we got two years out, and then if we can find that there was a necklace on his behalf, then we can exceed that one year. My right is turning.
Yes, sir. But what we're missing here is that he was doing the work under the employ of the county. So that's a different situation, we're not gonna be able to separate him out as an individual contractor.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lee.
So what, what, if I understood your terminology correctly, there would be no recourse against the contractor of record because he was currently employed even though he pulled the permit under general law?
That would be my opinion.
Is there, we, is there an insurance claim here? Can we claim this on insurance?
I can contact the agent and consult with him.
Do we know what the deductible is on that?
No.
Mr. Chairman, was it a result of rising water or just the moisture coming, just moisture coming in, the air being absorbed by the wood underneath the, the floor? Thank you, sir.
Well, if there's no recourse on the contractor of record, it'll either be an insurance claiming it paid that way or we're gonna have to find some money to pay it with.
We need, Mr. Chairman, we need to look into that, just to see if we can get that to the contractor on record?
We do, we will.
I'll be happy to recheck the, on that, but I don't, like I said, it's pretty complex, but I'd be happy to relook at it.
So I guess we will direct Mr. Revett to look into that further and then Administration to look into the insurance deal and bring it back and relook at it after that.
We need to go ahead and go out and do it.
For the work.
We don't want to prolong it so the election coming up, we'll see everybody that messes them up, but so. I haven't seen any evidence, but we're involved in, I don't have any parties there working on that.
Mr. Chairman, I, I mean, I, I'm just disappointed that, that, I mean, I'll be the first to say it, I'm just disappointed. I'm disappointed that, that I remember sitting, I wasn't on the board at the time, but I remember sitting those meetings and, and it was, it was said that we can do this ourselves and save money and do it cheaper, and here we are. I mean, I walked in there and the moisture, the moisture barrier is on, on top of the wood, meaning the moisture, correct me if I'm wrong, moisture, to come up from, it's the subfloor that's got the mold and whatnot.
Actually, it's not the subfloor, it's the overlayment. The subfloor, then there's an overlayment of 3X plywood, it is the plywood.
That's right.
That has decayed. The flooring underneath it is in, is in good shape.
Right. So by putting that waterproof barrier on top of that plywood, kind of created a, like from Austin.
Well, there, there are several things that cause that, but the main thing is there was, the, the problem is, is moisture comes through the air because it's cooler in the building than it is outside. It's just a natural way it conducts. But it comes through, there was no vapor barrier underneath it, now it's trapped between the under, the subflooring and the floor.
I'm saying.
Floor sheeting, because the floor sheeting was vinyl, and so it's locked in there. If you'll notice around the edge of the walls, the subflooring is still solid, and it's because it can breathe. There was no vinyl over the top of that, it could breathe, so the plywood there is still hard, but when you go out, if you look at it, if you just look at it, you couldn't take a piece of plywood and throw it out there in the yard, and two years later, it looked that bad.
From what I read, the roll-up door was not installed correctly either.
Well, the roll-up door was not sealed. It was a barn roll-up door, not a weatherproof sealed roll-up door to stop the elements from coming in also. So you get a migration of temperature moisture.
I guess I'm frustrated, Mr. Chairman, we spent six figures.
Well, I'm frustrated, it pushes the hose.
It's my opinion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I think you do have to, if we can, go back on the contract, I think you gotta give him an opportunity to fix it before you kind of get somebody else going there and doing any work anyway, if we can.
If you can, under chapter 258, you have to give the contractor a 30-day notice and an opportunity to correct any defects that, you know, were there. That's the procedure, if we get that far.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Revett, I have to ask you, there wouldn't be a conflict here between you and Mr. Harris with her?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So what's the board willing to do here? Mr. Hale.
I think a couple of things you guys have discussed is a good direction. Three things we need to do is put it up and check to see if the contractor is still a part of it, if it's following check with the insurance, see if there's any there, and if it's also, we have to come back and figure out.
I only expect it to take to get bids back.
It takes 30 days, by the time you get the spec radiian out.
So we could put it out for bid and still have a link between that and, and.
We would have to work differently. Start the process.
Is that good?
Yeah. We should have taken the money out of the agency or?
To work, to do the job.
Temporarily, I guess, if you gotta have the money, but.
You don't have to have any, you just have to keep that back.
Well, that's why I was gonna ask about the insurance or, or recourse, yes.
I think we discussed the budget at the next meeting.
Yeah.
We'll figure out rather off. We'll get in.
So do I have an offer, a motion to authorize to advertise for bids to the repairs of the Supervisory Elections Office?
Okay.
Motion by Commissioner Lynn, second by Commissioner Mobley, all in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Time specific, moving on the time-specific items, we're a little late, 5:05 or sooner after, as the matter can be heard, hold the second of two public hearings to consider the adoption of an ordinance concerning application number LDR 23-01, an application by the Board of County Commissioners to amend the text of Land Development Regulations by adding a definition for recreational vehicle to section 2.1 and also deleting section 4.19.37 in its entirety, replacing it with new standards. Mr. Meeks.
Hey, if there's anyone in the audience that thinks that they may give testimony on this matter, on this, during this public hearing, would you stand to be sworn, please? Okay? Do each of you swear or affirm, please, for him, please? Do each of you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give before the board decision will be the truth set up you got?
I do.
As you approach the podium, if you would, state your name and address clearly for the record, please. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, board members, this is the second of the two required public hearings for the adoption of a proposed text amendment to the Land Development Regulations. As previously stated, creating a definition in the Land Development Regulations for recreational vehicles and then section 4.19.37 establishing the criteria behind a recreational vehicle permit in Swanee County. You know, the result of this comes from several of the workshops that we had. We've had a hearing before planning and zoning board, we've had the first reading and public hearing before the Board of County Commissioners, so this will be the second time it's coming back before the board for their proposed adoption. Again, briefly want to go through these items. The definition, section of a recreational vehicle would be a unit primarily designed as temporary living quarters for recreational camping or travel use, which either by its own mode of power or is mounted or drawn by another vehicle. Recreational vehicles must comply with the length and width provisions of section 316.515 Florida statutes as amended. The term recreational vehicle shall include travel trailer, camping trailer, truck camper, motorhome, private motor coach, and fifth-wheel trailer. And as we previously stated, your park models are addressed separately in your Land Development Regulations where they would continue to be permitted and approved RV parks and campgrounds. Section 419.37 of the Land Development Regulations would outline the criteria for the recreational vehicle permit itself. In the recreational vehicles that have a current license plate and registration attached to the recreational vehicle may be used as temporary vacation dwellings allowed on vacant land within the agricultural, one, and environmentally sensitive areas, provided owners demonstrate a primary residence in another location. Permit shall be for the use of the owners of the property, no commercial or rental use. Occupancy is limited to six months in a calendar year. Property is limited to one RV site. No other RVs may be connected or stored on the, on the permitted site. RVs must obtain permits for and be connected to septic, potable water, and electrical service. RV permit shall be renewed on an annual basis. RV permit and any subsequent renewal shall be posted in a weatherproof housing and the electrical service for follow-up inspections. RV shall remain road-ready and attached to utilities by quick disconnect, no blocking or removal of axles. The RV permit shall become void when a residential dwelling unit is placed on the property. And then we have the language in there to capture the older permits, that if a property with an existing RV permit issued prior to February 21st, 2023 is bound to be in code violation, any previous RV permit issuance shall become void. Property owner shall obtain a new RV permit and be substituted requirements of the section. Recreational vehicles may be occupied for short-term durations while visiting family or friends, not to exceed 14 days when visiting premises that provide adequate toilet facilities, and then the last portion except as otherwise provided by the Land Development Regulations, it shall be unlawful to occupy, live in, dwell in, or reside in any recreational vehicle in the county. So with, with that being said, this will be the second hearing of this proposed ordinance, so we would be looking for adoption, a motion for approval, and adoption of this ordinance by the Board of County Commissioners in this meeting tonight, and then that will become effective, and we will proceed with our recreational vehicle permits as they previously existed before the board saw.
What, I know we discussed this for, what about the fee that we was going to impose for that permit?
That, we're, we'll have a resolution that comes before the board at the next meeting that involves the fees. That is a prorated amount, so the annual renewal is $300. By the time we start issuing permits, we're gonna be back to our normal $250 permit range right now, being as we'll be going into March, so the, the actual resolution for the permit fee change will come before the board at the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lee.
Mr. Meeks, on that last paragraph, recreational vehicles may be occupied for short-term durations while visiting family or friends, not to exceed, should that read 14 consecutive days when visiting premises that provide adequate toilet facilities? Not just 14, just says 14 days.
We can do consecutive days and just correct that language.
Yes. I mean, the board members are okay with that.
Absolutely.
Any other questions, Mr.? See, and then, do you need to do that, Mr. Revett, turn that over to him or?
Yeah. The exhibits that, you know, we carry over, since this is the second public hearing, the exhibits that were admitted last time, the two composite exhibits will be carried forward.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks.
We would, if the board so chooses to make that approval tomorrow morning, I can amend that language and have it sent over to Eric and Logan for your execution.
Is that just for the consent?
That's the work.
Okay. I don't need to get it done. So that has to be approved after it's corrected, Mr. Revett?
No, so you make the, make the, pardon the motion tonight, make the motion with the correction.
Okay.
That's the way the motions should sound.
Okay.
You still have other public comment?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Meeks. At this time, I'll leave the floor to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak?
Stephen Fontana, 21181, 144th Street, Live Oak. I think you're making a mistake with the whole recreational vehicle changes or even having it, and the reason why is because from, from what we've seen so far, I think it's all circumstantial. We saw a bunch of pictures, they said, hey, you know, we're getting some contamination into the river. What was the actual data? How many people had an E. coli problem from a septic problem? What if, if they detected some feces, human feces from non-limited-use wells, not a portable well, if they detected that, how many parts per million was it? And how do you know that didn't come from people just letting their septic tanks overflow, which is more likely a situation? So we have all this circumstantial information, then we go and we revise a regulation that I think don't think should be there in the first place. Unless there is a problem with somebody's health or a specific problem that you're addressing with the environment, you should not restrict land use, because if you could restrict it for recreational users, you're gonna, you could restrict it for anything else. So you need to keep that principle in mind, that it, just, don't just call out the recreational users and say, you can't use your land this way, because I haven't seen any data, hard data and evidence, that it's really a problem. You know, you can't just show a bunch of pictures and say, oh, we see garbage, oh, we see people having their sewage come out onto the ground. You know, you address those specific issues, but still, how many people had an E. coli problem? How much, how many parts per million of sewage and waste was really on the property and did it escape that property? Was it a problem for the, for the county? So I, I think you're, you're making a mistake on a principle level, and it has the potential of turning you eventually, and you're not there yet, turning you into an HOA and a nanny county. Okay? Now, I'll just say my piece.
No, no, I got a question.
Sure.
I'm, I'm just trying to get to where you're going. So you're saying we shouldn't do anything, there should be no restrictions at all, is that what, is that what I'm hearing you say?
Unless there's a specific problem with either health or with the environment, and I don't, I don't believe that's happened.
Well, I've seen one of them.
I haven't seen any numbers, and I think you need to look at data, not, not pictures.
Well, it's not that we're, we're not restricting them from putting, getting an RV permit. We're gonna give them an RV permit if they do, by what they need to do, but what we're trying to get away from is five more to go with it on the same piece of land.
Right, why is that a problem?
Well, you got, are they gonna put in five septic tanks and five power poles and?
Five assessments.
Yeah, five assessments.
If whatever they have in place can accommodate the number of people, because it's not the number of units, it's the number of people. You have five people in a house, that's just as many as five individuals in five different RVs. So again, it's, it's about the data and about, you know, the capacity, it's not about specific RVs. You're, you're, it looks like you're taking a sledgehammer to, to doing that, and I don't think you're, number one, I don't think you're addressing, addressing the problem, and I don't think there is a problem.
Chairman. Yes, sir. Mr. Perkins.
Sir, I've got a call that people complained about in their neighborhood having RVs parked in here and competing with their property tag, and they don't want to have people to come in and just bring RVs and park anywhere. Everywhere we have rules and regulations, we just want to just say that we would regulate everybody to abide by, so that everybody else has a fair playing ground, and not just have everybody to come in and do what they want to do, and just park RVs anywhere, and not have the proper hookups and county local scene to make sure that everybody's healthy, that we're taking care of. So if we don't have rules and regulations, everybody, anybody that's gone, they're on their parents', it's built in their park, so that's what we're gonna do.
I, I can understand looking at RV parks and regulating businesses. Where I'm more concerned is individuals and individual property rights. So you're taking a situation with RV parks and that's rolling over into changes in regulations for individual property owners, and that's where I think you've crossed the line. It's, it's two different animals. There's the corporate and then there's the individual. And so I understand what you're saying, that you don't want multiple RV parks, and people should have a right to, to say what's zoned next to them or not with regard to businesses.
Even so, that having, even landlord just having to just come and get his park over there, RVs on their property, it's fact of the, there's a lot of that that's going on in the county, about how that's, that's fact of the RVs on their property.
And that, and the thing is, it's just because of the way it looks. There's no environmental issue, I don't think, unless you could prove that there's one, and there's no human safety issue. I say put up a stockade fence if you don't like what your neighbor's doing. You know, it's, it's, this is a free country, and, and you're going down a road, whereas today it's the RV owners and multiple RVs, you're gonna be doing something you're not gonna be able to do with your property.
Commissioner Mobley.
I, I feel what you're saying, and I myself, we do this, we do a little hunting thing and, like, I myself, I had to get a plywood for another permit to get my property rezoned just to be able to put five campers on there. I, I've had to do that myself. I not necessarily got a campground, but I just got a temporary, you know, seasonal thing, which I had to abide by the rules too. I had to go get a property rezoned, Mr. Meeks, and I had to do the same thing, just to, kind of do it the right way, I think is all they're asking to do. So I've had to do that myself.
I, I don't think you should have had to do that. I, I don't see, I don't see the, the concern for safety or the environment, and whether, what you're doing is you're putting it on record that you have it in some of this business, and you're giving them some money. That's about it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Before you say that. Yeah, just real quick, and I agree with all these folks up here, and I do not disagree with you wholeheartedly, but just the research and the folks I've talked to, I don't know if this is the end also, I think it just gives us a starting point, if you will, but the main thing we're trying to do is...
But the main thing we're trying to do is kind of what you alluded to was, if it, if one septic tank works for one camp camper or motorhome or whatever, that's fine. But I, I know just since we've been talking about this, I had a situation where there were five hooked for one. Not permitted, no house being built, just kind of stuck out in the woods and that's where folks were at. And again, it just, I think the folks want to do it right. We were moving down the lines today. If you want a second camper, then we got to do that research like you were saying. It's a household thing. How many people are going to be there? If there's two campers and ten people's going to be there, then maybe it takes two tanks. And we'll, we need, I think we're going to address that at some point in time and allow folks to do things like that. I don't disagree with that. But for right now, I think it's just a really good, at least we're trying to make an attempt to stop bad people. The ones that, you know, that was called upon to, to do some research and see what was going on. And they were completely illegal. They had zero permits and, and probably winning their land. That was it. So, you know, it's just, like I said, it's just, I think it's, I hate that we're taxing and charging and things like that. But like one of the commercials say, if, if you're going to be there, obviously you're going to use the resources. Don't know if it's full-time or not. Those things we have to figure out, like I said. I don't know that this is perfectly, but I think it's just something we have to start to try to figure out. The people want to do right are going to do right. The people that want to do wrong, they're going to always do wrong. So that's it.
I agree with educating people, giving them information, but don't, don't restrict. Until you have, unless you absolutely have to.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Meeks, is you going to comment on that or you won't? There was, there was some other people that only.
Excuse me, excuse me, you weren't standing up a while ago to be sworn when we were doing all of that. Did you raise your hand?
Yes, sir, sorry.
Do you swear from the testimony you give before the board this evening, be the truth to help your guy?
Yes, sir.
Name and address.
Darling, you're very welcome. One oh one, Darling C, one oh one, five zero eight, Davis. I personally have witnessed a whole bunch of travel trailers coming in. And not just five as a minimum, okay? More than five. And they're not doing it just one lot, they're buying up several lots and putting them on top in housing area. And to me, I agree that is an issue. And it's funny that I come to this meeting and that's what I'm coming for. And I usually don't say much, stay in my own little world. But this definitely does need to be addressed. It don't need to be overlooked because like y'all said, there's going to be more issues. And especially with the water and our water table and stuff like that, we don't need any issues in that. We've had issues before and even with the mining and stuff, I mean. So we really need to take care about it and really check everything out. And not just allow, I mean, because if they bring in all these trailers and it's not personal and they rent it out, they can say it's their friends, but they're renting it out to make a profit, so why would they want you to know the business? So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Appreciate your comment. Anybody else?
I haven't been sworn.
I see another gentleman that I don't believe is sworn either, both of you. You each swear or affirm that the testimony you give before the board this evening will be the truth to help your guy.
I do.
I just wanted to make the comment.
Jeff, name and address.
John Shone, seventy-three eleven, one hundred eighty-first Street. Just wanted to make the comment on this too. I'd like, Mr. Mobley have a small hunting camp that, that has just gone through the process of getting approved by the board. And I, I, you know, there were some fees involved in it, but I understand what the county was trying to do with that and I appreciate it. But I think we, I have four or five RVs out there, but two septic tanks that, that were professionally inspected, pumped out, all inspected, the power, everything was inspected properly and, you know, I think, I think they did it the right way on that. And that's a temporary seasonal thing, but I appreciate it. Like I said, I went through it myself. It was a little bit of, a little charge, not much. I think it ended up being three or four hundred bucks, but it was, I think it was the right thing for the county to do.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Name and address.
John Palasano, seventy-six eighty-nine, one hundred sixty-first Road in Mr. Go's district. I understand the concern and from what I've been able to gather, it's not just a concern of Swanee County. It's in Fayette Counties and Hamilton Counties and the surrounding areas. That what we have seen, break me if I'm wrong, the background of this is kind of like what my electrician warned me about. Now, I've got an RV that's permitted, it's on my ten acres, and we are building a home. So I've got a question about that also, Mr. Meeks. Am I, you know, because here's, here's my concern. I can understand why we're regulating that. I come really from a, agreeing with Mr. Fontana than anything else, a more libertarian aspect of it. I understand why we're imposing these regulations out of a superabundance of concern for health. But on the other hand, show me the data. What's the data? And I appreciate all you gentlemen serving and I appreciate your firsthand reports of what you have seen on these sites. My electrician told me, you can put up a stanchion, you're going to be building a house, but we can only put a hundred amp service in there. I'm like, why only a hundred amp service? This is the background of this is, he said, because what people have done in the past is they get their RV permit, they put up a stanchion, they get two hundred amps of power, and then they make their own little private mobile home park or RV park with one set of resources and one permit, which is obviously an abuse of regulations. So correct that. But is there language, this is the question I've got. Is there language in this new resolution, this land designation resolution that allows for somebody like me who's doing it the right way, got an RV permit, spent a whole lot of money on getting the infrastructure put in, now I'm building a house, I don't know when the house is going to be completed. Am I now restricted to six months living in my construction trailer? That's the question that I've got.
No, that was for Meeks and I.
Thank you. But I just caution you all as our governing body to deliberate on these things. We are a deliberative body. We believe in slow management of legislative action in this country. We've seen this on the federal level, just recently with the election of the Speaker of the House. A lot of people complained about it, but that's the way this government is supposed to work. On the federal level, state level, and on the local level as well. Take the time, examine the data, make the data available to people so that we can make an informed supportive decision. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
For a little bit of clarification, this, this regulation refers specifically to recreational permits. People who live elsewhere and are coming to our community because they want to stay temporary or seasonal or have a place to come and stay at their river lot and things like that. It is not really designed for people who are building a house. We have a separate recreational permit, which is a one-year temporary use permit that is used in a situation like that. Now typically with the recreational vehicle permits, and I believe I stated at the last meeting, there is a limitation on the electrical service of a hundred amp service. However, with any building permit application, building officials present tonight and anyone who wants to get more than that hundred amp service simply has to fill out a load calculation sheet, which shows what the electrical service is going to be used. And he has the authority to approve additional electrical service. So if they want to, if they're going to be building a house and they're going to be doing that and want to go ahead and pull that, that two hundred amp service, he can certainly sign off on that and get that done. So, you know, the question just has to be asked. This isn't in any way to try to hinder anyone from staying on their property while they're building. I think everyone in the commission is keenly aware of, of what exists in the county and how we're trying to deal with it. I, I know, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I know we have some individuals here that are waiting to get their recreational vehicle permits and they are checking with me and they're fine with this language. They just want to be issued their permit. I mean, they just want to process that. They're perfectly fine to follow the guidelines. They just want to have the option to get their permit. And that's from most of the people that we've had conversations with. I've shared this language with everybody who's faced the moratorium right now. I've not had anyone who's trying to secure the permit that has stood in my office and, and was against it. They, they were fine with it. They just wanted the process to be there to secure the permit.
And I, just to add for clarification, all the, the temporary permits we had before this, those were for indefinite, right? When we issued those permits?
Yes, the, the recreational permits previously had guidelines behind them. The limitation of the six months was already there. Proving a primary residence elsewhere was already there. What we did is we grabbed some language that comes dealing with floodplain permits, because we're dealing with environmentally sensitive areas too. But those permits had no expiration on. So the only expiration of those permits came to be is if you decided to build a house and you placed a residence on the property, then the residential permit would take precedent over the recreational permit. Outside of that, there was no follow-up behind them. And in many cases where we had complaints and code violations that were reported to our office, when we went out there to see them, we could either find that they did secure a recreational permit, but like you said, there ended up being five in its place. And the septic that was there was never intended to handle that volume. So that's where we started encountering homemade septic systems with fifty-five gallon drums in the ground, and that's when the environmental health department got involved. And this became not just a zoning and building issue, it became an environmental health issue. And in the meantime, you know, we've had a lot of our surrounding counties that have also had and faced similar issues in their county because we're, they're, we're not unique. I mean, you know, we cross the river, but the counties look the same. You know what I mean? So the same issues that we have in Swanee County, they're facing in Lafayette County, they're facing in Madison County. I've had conversations with individuals from Madison County. They've asked me to send them our language. I have. They're very happy with the way that we've tried to do this. I actually got told that it was the best that they had seen from, from their research.
Send them a ballot.
So, so I think that, I think that they may be pursuing something like that. But I think they also are aware, do we have a joint resource, okay? And if we're doing good on our side to follow rules, to protect our natural resources, our rivers and springs, if our joining counties are not doing something similar, then it's all for naught. You know what I mean? So we kind of all got to be on the same page. And I, and I feel like that everyone's kind of moving in that same direction and it's not just us. It's, it's, it's in our region. This is a big issue and they're all trying to find a way to deal with it.
Well, and the reason I brought that up is to say that before we had no way, no recourse really to go look at their place to see if they were violating. But now if they've got three or four campers on there and they pulled a permit and it was grandfathered in, they lose that grandfather status at that point if it's code violation.
Correct, yeah.
And then they have to fall under the new regulations, so that cleans it up.
Gives them an opportunity to stay in line with the requirements if they, they, they got their permit.
Because I'm a property rights guy too. I don't like the government telling me what to do either. But at some point, you got to quit just stacking them up like cordwood. And I think that's what we've been doing. So just my opinion on it. Is there anyone else on public comment? Yes, sir.
My name's Jeff Grossman. It's one-two-eight-four-three, two-hundred-twenty-ninth Drive in Live Oak. I appreciate hearing that sound. I would like to say that Mr. Meeks is, we came in when I was looking at the property probably in August. And the first, right around the first of September, I came in and spoke to Mr. Meeks about the property and it was unrestricted. Told him I wanted to bring my motorhome in, really what, exactly what we wanted to do. He looked it up, it's very helpful, and said, we can do this. I went and bought the property and took about three weeks to close. And I came in where he had the bad job of telling everybody that's coming in there that, of this moratorium, ninety days. And that was just beginning of October. Now we're five months into that. We've come about seventy thousand dollars into it. And we've done the septic tank and, and so forth, the pump. We're trying to get in with the electric. And I appreciate every time I've come in there, if I talk to the code enforcement or the utility department or Mr. Meeks, everybody is trying to see what we can do. Now, I don't feel restricted other than behind the law right now, but they've all tried to make it work. And I also went around, probably looked at about thirty properties before I purchased ours. And there were many places I did not want to go because you saw four or five RVs and a bunch of trash. I didn't go on their property, so I don't know about their septic tank or anything. But I imagine if you look at it, they probably aren't trying to do the right thing. So we, we just moved on. So until we found this property. So my ask tonight is that, that you would accept this and take this moratorium off so we can go on. And I think, as you said, the people that are going to do right are going to try to do right. If we don't know the regulation, maybe we'll make a mistake, but we're trying to do right. But you've had a problem for a period of time and I understand. But you'll catch it as, as you settle out. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Is there anyone else on public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Is there any further vote board discussion? Few more questions, Mr. Meeks?
Mr. Adler. This is just procedural. Mr. Meeks? Once this is passed, if this passes tonight, if this passes tonight, when with the moratorium, when can Mr. Grossman, Star Inspector, get his permit? How quickly does that happen?
At the next meeting, because you'll have to approve the resolution for, for the schedule of fees at that point. And at that point, it will be complete so that we can, you know, move forward.
There's no way to expedite that because that's a tutorial related time period?
Well, you have to have the fee because you refer to the resolution.
Well, the, the fee, because it would be prorated, would, would still be the same fee that exists today.
At this point.
At this point.
But I'm saying it's what the language would say or what's proposed, you know, would be for the three twenty-five, I guess.
It's three, it's proposed to go to three hundred, which.
Three hundred, okay.
I mean, we're not going to be able to issue a permit this week. So, so, you know, basically, once we're in, I would, I would anticipate based on the time schedule and processing the applications, we would be at least March first before we're able to start issuing permits, which would put that fee at two fifty, which is where we're at now. That is the adopted fee schedule. So two fifty.
And I can appreciate that on the prorated scale. But I would still say that because the process is not complete, to have that fee in place any different, you know, with this, because you're making the change for that. Unless you're saying that you're going to leave it at two fifty until the next meeting anyway.
It's going to be two fifty until the next meeting anyway. The fee would not change.
Until we adopt.
The, the fee, well, it's going to be two hundred fifty dollars starting March first. It's not going to go to two twenty-five until April first. So it would be prorated throughout the year. So that three hundred dollar fee that we would adopt as what the actual fee is would not, would not come back until January.
Yeah, we still got to, it wouldn't go all the way back around then, okay? I will say though, what I, what I was going to propose would be different from that for the schedule of fees would be just like, you know, when you get a tag or whatever, that the schedule of fees would be payable from that point, beginning your, beginning your year so that you would track it rather than being prorated, you know, from the beginning of the year and going through. That way you know that on April first, if you bought a permit, it's good for a year. And if you buy another permit, you know, April first, the next year. And my thinking as I was going about, you know, developing that resolution, that the, you wouldn't have all of these permits hitting. you wouldn't have all of these permits hitting at one time. It would be spaced out throughout the year, so it would be easier to be able to control and police.
See, we, we did have some of this conversation in the workshop, and, you know, with conversation with staff and the way our system would work, we anticipated that we would have January as being our renewal, so we would have everyone on the renewal come in at January. And then, and it really, if you.
I remember the workshop.
On the enforcement side, it would be much harder to go all the way through the year and having renewals come every single month. Whereas the way our process would work is that January, the renewals would come up. February, we would have a notice that goes out, you know, for a reminder. March, there would be a late fee associated with that. And then April, that property's code violation. That way, we're dealing with them all at one time, rather than every single month, trying to figure out, well, you got ten this month, you got five next month, when are they going to be renewed? And you're dealing with a renewal all year long. And the way, the way the renewal is going to be is basically like the way you buy your sticker for your, for your tag. So it would be on the electrical service, just a simple for that year. So when you, when everyone comes in and renews their permit fee for January, for two thousand and twenty-four, that will be on their electrical service. And that would be subject to reinspection at that point in time. I think we had the discussion of having the annual, I mean, having that renewal run all year long, based on all the conversations we had with staff and the individual who does our building permit system, felt it was better to have the renewal at the start of the year.
Mr. Chairman. Do we have, are we staff to handle that influx of that down?
Well, I mean, the way, the way it's going to work is not everybody's going to come in on the first day of January. You know what I mean? It'll be, the notices will go out, and those individuals that have to do the renewal will have the whole month of January to come in. Then we'll capture and be able to run a report of which individuals did not come in, and that that notice will be sent in February. So if we get, we got fifty renewals that come for the month of January, and thirty people come and get their renewal, then we'll have twenty notifications that go out for those individuals to capture February. And then in March, we would have a late fee associated with that. And then in February, basically, then Robin's going to be dealing with those as a potential code violation, because they have not renewed their fee. I would much rather have it left to be renewed in January. And that's the way we've been working with our permit system to set it up as the renewal in January.
So now we're just changing the language here. The actual price won't change till next January.
Well, the proposed language that we'll have come for you will be a three hundred dollar prorated amount for that recreational vehicle permit, but no one will pay three hundred dollars right now. So by the time we're able to issue permits on a prorated amount from January, the fee would be two fifty, which is exactly what the recreational permit is now. So that's why I'm saying I don't feel that there's a deficiency in what we would charge because the fees that people are going to have to pay in the month of March are no different than what they would pay right now if there was no moratorium. What I've had a problem with is trying to locate the original resolution that the Board of Commissioners adopted a fee for RV permits. I have every other resolution for every other building permit fee probably known to man, but I cannot find the one for a recreational vehicle. And that's what I've kind of been working on the past couple of weeks.
Twenty-five dollars.
Huh?
Twenty-five dollars.
I've got it for mobile homes, I've got it for roofs, I've got it for electrical, mobile homes, everything across the board.
Mr. Revat, is it possible for us to do what Mr. Meeks is asking us to do, or am I going to jail for this? Is all I have.
I mean, I don't understand where he is for the next two weeks, you know, period of time. I just disagree with, and I think he's correct, because in place is the two fifty. And since we haven't passed a resolution changing what that fee would be, because it is what is in place, the two fifty just happens to match up for the next two weeks until we get to that. So I don't have a problem with that. So, I mean, understanding that you can go ahead and lift the moratorium after you, you know, do what you're going to do here, because it's not going to change. I have procedurally different opinion. I don't have a vote, but I have a procedurally different opinion about how it ought to be structured. And I'll get with Mr. Meeks, and maybe we will present you with alternatives, you know, at the next meeting, when we're talking about the schedule.
Well, my question is, can we, can we pass this and lift the moratorium and still do what you want to do?
Correct. Yes, you can.
Mr. Chairman.
That's good news. I think the Grossmans and everyone else would like to hear that, good news. But is there a way, Mr. Meeks and Mr. Revat, when y'all are discussing the prorated dates and the renewal times, is there a way that those renewal periods could align somewhat with our fiscal budget year so that there's a more alignment of revenues and expenses?
And that's, that's part of my argument, why it ought to be month by month, because of that, for budgetary purposes, and, you know, for past and then forward. But the answer is, you can tell us, instead of it starting at January, every permit starts, yeah, October first, you know, to line up exactly with the voted year.
Our thought process was behind the limitation of six months occupancy in the calendar year. We were looking at starting the calendar year in January.
No, I'm not knocking anyone's thought process. I could ask some questions.
Some difference of opinion between staff, and that's what you guys get paid to resolve.
Mr. Chairman. I reckon I want to ask your question.
I have a quick question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
As the plans on the committee, have you discussed this with them, have they looked at all the things?
Yes.
Any other input from those guys? I haven't spoken to any of them, I just wanted any ideas.
Process behind it goes before planning, it's only before, before it even comes to the committee and advisory. Motion was to approve. We did have some discussions at that meeting. One, one of our board members individually, I think, was pretty passionate about recreational permits. But I think there was a little, I tried to clarify the language a little bit because I think that a lot of the concern on that individual's part had more to do with RV parks and campgrounds. And I was trying to, you know, clarify that we can't intertwine them because that is something different. You know, some of them, some of the requirements may ultimately look the same and be similar because you don't want to encourage residential usage in RV parks and campgrounds. But this language was limited to a single recreational vehicle permit. But ultimately, through our public hearing process with the planning and zoning board, it was unanimous recommendation for approval to the commission. Now, what we did not discuss would be what the board has to decide on as fees and things like that. We were really limited to the LDR text amendment. Everything else kind of falls under board policy.
I mean, is it really a big deal if we start? I mean, I get the budget process, but if we start in January and run it, is it a problem for anybody?
I think the only biggest part of it right now is that for a while now, since we've been doing this, we've been working with our program through the building department program, because the way that these permits will be numbered and sequenced in order to run our reports, I think he's developed that program to where it's going to fall in line with when we will do this renewal on an annual basis, rather than having to try to capture how many this month. And I don't know what that would look like if we had to start that process over again. I think that would lengthen the time. It's not a quick overnight fix. I mean, that's writing codes and putting things in a program.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Land.
I mean, I'm okay with if you want to do January. I mean, staff is, are the ones that have to keep up with this enormous amount of permits and chasing people. So I can understand where you're coming from, having to do it every single month, and the prorate, and the numbers changing, and who's out of cut lines every month will change in doing it only calendar year. I mean, I like it better if it aligned, you know, kind of like the real estate taxes in our fiscal year, but I'm not the guy having to keep up with all that stuff. If it's easy for you all to keep up with it, we'll just have to figure it out on a budget end on how to account for those revenues as they come in, even though they don't align with the fiscal year. So I get it.
I mean, we can always run a report within our years. If you wanted to know, like, how much did we gain from revenue from October one to October one, our building department can run that report, and we can, we can separate that out at any point in time. We could also capture how many permits were issued within that window of time. We, you know, the way that the permits are numbered, we got to know what we're asking it to do. And that's the biggest thing that we were looking at doing this, this use of January as the start of the year. I think Robin was gearing his notices around January to go forward. He was a big influence on that because, I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, once it goes beyond our permitting process, and then it goes with the follow-up, that's really on Matt's side and Robin's side with follow-up inspection and notices of violations if they're existing. I think that on their side, they felt that would be best, and that's kind of where we derived that from.
Mr. Chairman.
Keith here. He's not saying anything for finance. Any pros or cons or ideas on when that should happen?
Well, it's always easier with the fiscal year. I can understand what he's saying. September, get it.
We just tried to issue permits.
Well, and I think we can go ahead and get that accomplished tonight and come back and figure the other out at the next meeting. So we are having a discussion.
Lot 17, can I get a motion to approve with the change?
Thank you. Fourteen days.
Motion, Mr. Commissioner Lynn. Second by Commissioner Burke. All in favor, aye? All opposed, same sign. Motion carries forward.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add, at this point in time, I know most of you are familiar with when we adopted the original moratorium on the RV permits. After some discussion and after some of these workshops, the board ultimately adopted a separate moratorium on the RV parks and campgrounds. The last time that that was extended, it was anticipated that it would run concurrently with the moratorium that you had for the recreational vehicles. We anticipate having some language developed for RV parks and campgrounds that we'll be bringing before the planning and zoning board in March, and then coming before the commission in April for your adoption. And in doing so, we probably need to extend that moratorium on RV parks and campgrounds.
Till?
If you want to do another ninety day moratorium, that will, I think that, I think that will be probably, I don't want to give you sixty days, but I anticipate, you know, that's our window of time is planning is on the board in March, and then commission in April. First hearing, first reading, and the first meeting in April, adoption at the second meeting. I don't know how many days that actually ends up being, but it may be within that sixty day window.
So May twenty-first, I need to mail through.
I think, yeah, yeah. You shouldn't, we shouldn't be in two May. We should have the adoption done.
We can run it till then if we, then it'll be off anyway.
I just didn't want to run into the situation that we have, people asking for that, and we can't move forward with that, with that application. So we've got some language that we're already working on with that, that number as well.
Understood.
So we need to extend that moratorium, Mr. Revat?
Need a motion to approve.
Remove the other one. Remove the other one first, and then extend.
RV parks and campgrounds.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Land.
I move to remove the moratorium on the recreational vehicle permit.
Motion by Commissioner Lynn. Second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye? All opposed, same sign. Motion carries forward.
How to extend the other?
What date?
Just ninety days.
Just ninety days for the day.
I guess if I'm rolling, I want to say anything, I'll do this one. Mr. Chairman, I move to extend ninety day moratorium on the RV campground and parks.
Motion by Commissioner Lynn. Second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye? All opposed, same sign.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't ask, is there any current applicants for Mr. Meeks?
For RV parks and campgrounds? No, sir. We get, we get questions all the time, but, you know, again, with that, we let people know that we're going to be modifying the process, changing that from a special exception to a special permit, and putting some standards in place for that. And most everybody's been understanding of that, they just want to know, has anybody been adopted yet or anything like that? But we do get questions if you got them.
Moving on to item number seventeen, five oh five, or sooner or after, a matter could be heard, hold a public hearing to consider closing, vacating, renouncing, and disclaiming all rights of interest of Swanee County in an alleyway located at block thirty-two, Platte of Dalling Park and a portion of two-hundred-and-thirty-fifth lane. Mr. Meeks.
Mr. Chairman, board members, we did have an application by a property owner, Mr. Cool. His, his property, he actually owns, if you look at the map, it's party backup information, he owns that entire block of block thirty-two. I know that there's a, there's a, he has one large chunk that takes in, I think, all the two lots under one parcel ID number, and then the bottom two lots, he also owns under separate parcel ID numbers, but there is no other affected property owner that falls within the location where the alleyway is located between the middle of block thirty-two. And then the property immediately east of block thirty-two is an undeveloped portion of what is named as two-hundred-and-thirty-fifth lane. I think on Platte, it's also denoted as Delaware Avenue, but it is not a developed public road. It does exist on the Platte, so it's technically county right of way. We've, on the map, we've kind of hashed that area there. Mr. Cool owns the property to the west, which would be all of block thirty-two. The other adjoining property owners that are east of two-hundred-and-thirty-fifth lane have either signed on the application in support or submitted their letters of support behind his request. Through the years, there have been multiple alleyways and partial, partial locations in the Platte of Dalling Park. That's an old Platte subdivision that exists in the county, and there, and there are probably a dozen different alleyways that have been vacated through the years. Some of the alleyways do exist and serve as access to some of the lots, but a lot, a vast majority of them serve no purpose.
Any questions of Mr. Meeks?
Mr. Chairman, if I might clarify with Mr. Meeks, that the alleyway is one portion, so there's actually two portions, and you're talking about the two-hundred-and-thirty-fifth lane. For board's informational purposes, there are those of the lane falling between different property owners. Up to the middle of the road there, to the east of those, would go to the three forty hours on the east, and everything on the west half of that road would go to Mr. Pink. Just for clarification.
Any more questions of staff? Seeing none, I'll open the floor to public comment. Anybody wishing to speak?
Is Mr. Cool present? I don't know if he wants to say anything, or if he has anything to add.
If you want to, if you want to speak, the attorney will have to swear again.
If you have any questions.
Okay. Mr. Cool, do you swear or affirm the testimony you give, the seeking will be the truth self? You got it?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Name an address for the record, please.
Charles Cool, one-two-one-one-four-seven, Seventy-sixth Street, Flat Oak.
I don't have any questions. I don't have any questions. If his neighbors ain't bad, I ain't bad.
Let's do it.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Is there any other board discussion? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adopt? Motion, Master Commissioner Mobley.
Second.
Second, Master Commissioner Lynn. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries filed here.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Mink. Appreciate it, sir.
Ron.
This time, is there any staff items? Any commissioner items? Sorry, Jason, come on.
Just briefly, Mr. Chairman, for, just want to remind you, several big, large events coming to town to our facilities. The fair, March seventeenth to the twenty-fifth. This week, Tabernacle, Baptist School has a sixteen-team state tournament that they're bringing in. We're using the Coliseum and the Douglas Center for Thursday and Friday. Feel free to stop by and watch some high-performance basketball. And the strawberry festival this weekend, several thousand people on the fairgrounds Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Also, last month, you approved up to thirty thousand dollars for the school repairs. Came in at eighteen thousand dollars, so.
Get a refund?
Get a refund. Jim's trying to get it out of me. We're not going to let that happen. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Jason. Any other staff items? Any commissioner items? Mr. County Attorney, any items?
Yes, sir.
Any additional agenda items? Public concerns and comments? Anyone wishing to speak? Yes, sir, you've been itching me. Mind if I come up? Any of these?
No, sir, come on.
Name an address for the record.
My name is Fred S. March. I live out one, five-eight-five-oh, one-hundred-and-forty-first Road, McAllen, Florida. I'm here because of truck drivers that got killed. Don't know whether they got murdered or just got killed, but I'm here because of that. And also because I want every law enforcement officer in this county to have a body camera. I bought body cameras for the live oak police department. The sheriff's supposed to buy a body camera for the sheriff's department. I don't see one on his shoulder, but he's got a gun. That means he can kill someone. And nobody knows that it was a good shooter or not, because he don't have a body camera on him. And y'all are the ones that tell him what to do. Y'all can make him put body cameras on his deputy, because y'all have hurt Hope the first strings. If you don't pay him money, he can't do nothing. Is that, am I wrong?
No.
So, y'all have the ability to force him to put body cameras on every law enforcement officer. He has them, right?
Fred, we already do, Fred. We already do, Fred.
You don't have one on. You got a gun, don't you?
But they all do, Fred.
But you do not have one on. You got a gun.
It's not time for that, but I'm on it. How do you deal with like a, like a?
Mr. Fred, Mr. Martin, and Sam, as a point of order here, please address what you're addressing to the board, please. Not to them.
I apologize. I apologize.
It's fine.
Someone talks to me, I usually respond.
I understand.
But, I mean, I want to say ones that cannot be turned off. I mean, I got people over on the southeast, I know, the northeast, South Tampa, would like to know where they're, any law enforcement officers or even that, but then this live oak, and they're very seldom over in that neighborhood. I ain't going to say what I seen over there, but I'm not sure. But we need body cameras on every law enforcement officer, the POV, point of vision, that cannot be turned off or muted. And on the state troopers, because we just had a state trooper kill someone, he didn't have a body camera on. I don't know if it was a good shooter or not. You don't know if it was a good shooter. All we can do is guess. But there's a dead truck driver. He's dead. He ain't coming back. If he has, his parents are grieving, because he got killed the other day. And we don't know if it was a good shooter or not, do we? Tell the truth. Nobody does, because he didn't have a body camera on. And that's why I'm here, because I'm sick and tired of hearing about people getting killed by law enforcement officers. That, oh, I didn't have a body camera, but just seen five deputies get on black, feed on camera, and stumped the shit out of them.
Watch, you have to watch.
I apologize. I apologize. But they stomped him bad. And he died two days later. I can't remember his name, but y'all know who I'm talking about. And nothing's going to happen to him. They're going to get away. But I'm here to see about putting body cameras on law enforcement officers that cannot be turned off. Point of vision. The ones up here, because you have one here on your chest, when you bring your hands up like this, you hide everything in front of you. You can't see past your hands or the gun. Then you got to trust the person who shot the person to tell the truth. I want the body camera to tell the truth. Does that make any sense? And y'all got the power to make him put body cameras that can't be turned off. Not me. I can only run for sheriff and put it up on my pack, on my agenda. And that's what I'm going to do again. I'm going to run for sheriff again and put it up on my agenda. Body cameras that cannot be turned off or muted.
Okay, Mr. Martin, I got it.
Have a beautiful day.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Sam, you want to address them body cameras real quick?
We have the actual body cameras. They're now right here on your chest, not on all the time. It's just, you want to have just contact. Had on all the time, then you got a storage problem. So, that's how we do the here-informed care.
I just wanted to address what he was saying.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public concerns, comments? Hey, how are you?
I'm Wendy Martin. Married Fred, I live at one-five-eight-five-oh, one-hundred-and-forty-one Road. And I want to bring up the issue of the time you guys meet, because I look around and I see a bunch of old parks like the rest of us. I don't see any of the working class families that don't get off work at four-thirty, five o'clock. So, if they have an issue, and I'm acquainted with a few that might have with this RV hearing you had tonight, they cannot attend. They would have to take time off from work because of this five o'clock meet time. I know that I've logged county commission meetings when it was at seven o'clock in the evening. Attendance was not always good unless there was a public hearing going on, but when Gamble went ahead and moved it back to six o'clock in the evening, it cut back on how many people were coming in, even just for generalized meetings. And this meeting was five o'clock, even though I'm retired, I still have a difficult time getting in here on time to be able to attend these meetings. So, I think we should go back to either six or seven o'clock timelines so that more of the public can attend these events and have a voice in what's going on in the county. And in reference to what Fred was talking about, a lot of law enforcement nowadays is taking, they're shilling themselves with Marcy's law, which is currently before the Supreme Court. Marcy's law was invented, was came up with to protect victims of violent crime, not law enforcement. And the other issue is, some I've heard rumor that they're talking about changing the ad valorem tax, or not the ad valorem, the homestead on the amount of tax increase. It's currently at three percent. There's rumor that their, our state congress is talking, trying to move it down to two percent, make it a referendum. And my question is, how's that going to affect everybody? Because there's a lot of non-homestead owners that don't have these caps on what the, how much property can be revalued. I know that there's been a habit here lately of protecting real estate investors and commercial investors on what caps can be put on their property tax. So, other than the individual homestead owners that might be able to benefit, the one percent we're going to lose in ad valorem. Ad valorem pays for our hospitals, our law enforcement, our schools, and our state legislature hasn't, well, because you guys can address the state legislature on this, they're going to ignore the general public.
I'm just stopping there for a second. No, I'm just trying to figure out what you're talking about here. What, what, what ad valorem tax are you talking about?
Some of the, one of the bills filed in our state legislature is to change the cap on the ad valorem, where it will come to a vote of the public, where instead of being at a three percent, they want to drop it down to two percent, which is great for homestead people, but if you have non-homestead property, this cap won't apply. There's going to be a loss in revenue from it, because this one percent is also going to come out of how much ad valorem is collected. And ad valorem, whether it's homestead or non-homestead property, is what pays for a lot of the services we, the public, rely upon. And our state legislature has been silent on, nobody has bothered to run the numbers on how it's going to affect any of these communities, and it will affect live oak, it will affect our county.
I'm sorry, ma'am. I'm assuming she's talking about save our homes cap is what she's discussing?
Correct. I'm not sure what it's called.
No, that's what I, that's why I was confused. You were saying ad valorem, not save our homes as a cap on what they can.
On what they can raise your home's valuation, but that cap doesn't apply to non-homestead properties. Commercial businesses and real estate investment properties come under a different tax code. So, it's going to end up where a lot of the non-homestead property owners will end up having to fork over the difference around that one percent drop down they're talking about making, which as a non-homestead, as a homestead, that's great, I love it. But for purposes, I also have non-homestead properties that would be affected by this. There's a lot of people in this county that would have it. And they have not shown any of the numbers on how's it going to affect, what services are going to be cut from it. And I think it's on you guys to find out, because they're going to give the rest of us the runaround. They'll pay attention to you folks, because you're a good official.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I'm sure we'll hear more about it in the coming months. We all hit the last.
Thank you.
There was an email that went out, so, and I followed up with the property praiser. Most usually, it's not a full three percent. He goes up anyway, follows the calculation. He said there'd be very little impact in Swanee County, so just to be accurate.
Mr. Bird, was he coming up to speak?
If I could.
Okay, we don't take recess just to. Bring the meeting back to order. Public concerns and comments. Bird, was he coming up to speak?
If I could, please. I'm Glenn Bird, seventy-nine-two, thirty-second Road, Lyonne. I hope you don't mind if you backtrack just a second on that motor coach thing. Does that mean if I got one parked in my yard, I'm going to have to PSS on it and stuff? No? It is not being used? Okay, and on them crashes that's been happening, and that intersection down there, would it help if I had to, please bring us some photos or anything, to, if you guys understand what's going on.
You can email photo, Mr. Scott. You can email photos.
Okay. All right, and then other than that, it's just on that lawsuit that's going on there. If you just read that over and, you know, maybe not tonight because of the time and all that, it's up to you, but if there's anything that you guys might want to address on, I mean, it's just a really sticky situation, and, you know, I got sucked into something because of dishonesty, and, you know, I was, I was actually told that, you know, my property, well, there's nothing, none of that infrastructure going on out there. I was told that by building and zoning and Randy Harris. And then, you know, the things just snowballed from there. And the ball was carried by Mr. Babat in the early stages. So, you know, like I said, I'm not, best I'm just going to keep coming until they bring different issues at times and hopefully get this thing, I don't know if, I just feel the judge made a really bad judgment, and there was things that weren't on, that were not on the table, and a lot of it was because of my, I guess you'd say my attorney, but then my attorney sent whitewashed things as well, that in there you see where I had a problem and an argument with my attorney without leaving things out, and even my attorney wasn't honest to me. And then I lost faith in him. So, anyways, it's just a bad thing where a citizen got sucked into something that is out of his control, and it involves my future and the future of my legacy and the future of my children, or my son. And, you know, it's, like I say, it all started because of this dishonesty that I was told in the, you know, whenever I was going up and asking questions, and everybody, like they kept saying, we have newspapers, we have public meetings and all this, it's like, why should I have to go to public meetings? I mean, now I'm starting to enjoy it. I've never really done this before. But the, why should I have to, like, read every paper that comes out to look for information? Why do I have to attend board meetings when I can walk up to building and zoning and get the answers? And when I did that, I went to building and zoning and I got the wrong answers. And it just, it just sucked me into a really, really ugly place. And I'm looking for some help somehow.
Well, that's, you brought this last, last time we had a meeting, Mr. Bird, and again, I'm just going to ask you, what is it you want us to do?
Well, I, well, public employee, I mean, Swanee County employees got me in this mess. And, you know, and I just, I mean, like I said, Swanee County employees got me in this mess, and then, you know, this one, I guess you'd call Harris a commissioner at the time or whatever, you know, manager, and, you know, I mean, it's, they, the county, the people that were, you know, was supposed to be working for the citizens of the county got me into this.
Yes, sir, and I'm not. I just really hear you.
There's copies over there for everybody if you want to pick one up and see what we're going, you know, talking about.
I don't want to make you feel uncomfortable, like, I hope I'm not making you feel uncomfortable. I'm not trying to do that. This is just, you know, this is another time you brought it before us, and I just wanted to hear what it is.
Well, this is deeper information.
Okay. This is different than what you brought last time.
Yeah, different, it's deeper, and, you know, this is, this is like, still on the subject and it goes deeper into the subject.
Yes, sir.
I hope you guys review it and see that something, that a citizen has been wronged here. And he's entangled in a, in a legal battle, you know, with a, with a big corporation that, you know, I mean, it's hard for a little guy like me to, to, you know, carry into this fight on my shoulders. And, as I say, considering the fact that county, you know, county, one of the county commissioners at the time, and a county employee, wasn't, you know, straight, you know, didn't tell me the truth, or the opposite of the truth. In fact, that map in there, that's in there, that's, that's a picture of one of the properties that N C Y P bought, and my property is located just to the north of it, the one that's in the problem. And, I forget where I was going with that now.
Mr. Commissioner. I mean, Mr. Chairman, I was reading up on the stuff you gave us last time, and you brought some stuff to light, like we're, is it a conflict of? last time, and you brought some stuff to light, like we're, is it a conflict of interest where, you know, our attorney was representing Insight or Mr. Adams at that point, where it's kind of unfair for Mr. Byrd, I mean, why did you, Mr. Prabat, why did you withdraw from that case or from that plot? If you didn't see if it was a conflict of interest, you know what I'm saying? I'm just looking at the picture that I was read up on before.
Yes, sir. At the particular time that, in what you're talking about, the particular period of time was, I chose to withdraw because there may be a perceived conflict of interest.
Yes.
So a perceived conflict, and so I withdrew.
I wasn't there at the time. I was just reading the, you know, with Fena and the stuff that he had gave us. So I was questioning if there was not a conflict, I don't know, sometimes it's kind of a mission of conflict to withdraw, you know? Just from outside looking in, I wasn't involved on the board at the time, but.
See, late in the investigation, like in the early days, I, 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 once, when this first started, we just thought it was against Insight. And then as time progressed, we found out that, when I was investigating stuff, which I've got files of investigators, I did have, I still had some, but copies of them, but my, my, my attorney shredded them for some reason, which I think is quite odd. But, I mean, there was a lot of stuff here that, that we should have been making motions on in the early days, like, you know, like, what do you call it, you know, in front of a jury instead of a judge. And so I could get the public's opinion in on it. And, and whenever, and then by the time we found out that, that some of the county was involved, I mean, that deadline passed, unfortunately. So, like I said, there's a lot of things that was out of my control on this thing. And I, I started bringing the attention to my, to my attorney at that time, that, you know, hey, the, when I started digging and finding out, hey, you know, employees are involved here. And, in fact, my words were, to her, was Harris is the guy, sort of several times, Harris is the guy. And we, and, well, like I said, we found out that Prabat was, you know, when my appraiser that I was gonna try to hire went to talk to him, he came back and he refused to give me appraisal. And that's because, I guess, of, you know, public pool, I mean, not public pool, but, you know, you know, what do you call it? What do you call yourselves? Well, the commission was involved, and the county was involved. And he's, he's pretty much on the, you know, like I said, he considers himself a friend of, of, you know, higher people in the government.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Byrd, I read through your documents that you passed out, you know, the other day, last, last meeting, I read through your documents, and honestly, you know, a lot of that stuff was new to me, a lot of it.
I'm sorry?
A lot of that stuff was new to me, a lot of it I found familiar. I think that probably some of the board members on here today, that probably was the first time that they had heard about it. Unfortunately, I recall, you know, it was a flashback from two years ago. And I do, I feel for you. As, as a commissioner, I feel for you, you're a taxpayer, you know, and then, you know, our meeting the other night, I, I did question our county attorney on why he refused himself, or withdrew his counsel on December of 2020. Two years after, he first became Mr. Adams' attorney. He went through, he represented Adams suing you to force you to sell. He went through the fire station purchase as Mr. Adams and Insight's attorney suing you. He went through our first zoning board meeting, giving us advice in which his client was applying for his zoning change. He was the attorney of record in your case still. And then the ethics investigation and the fire station debacle unfolded. And it was only after that did our county attorney withdraw his counsel for Adams and Insight. So-
No, it was-
It was December the 20th of 2020. That was in the document that you passed out.
Oh, I believe.
So, let me finish. I, I feel sorry, I do, I feel sorry for you. I feel like, I feel like David and Goliath, I do. I feel like you're David and you were fighting the machine. You were fighting. You know, I read Fena's ruling, I read where Fena said, I believe it was Judge Fena, he said, why in the, well, I'll just cut to the chase. He said that he found, or the court found, in fact, that Mr. Harris was an agent for Ronald Adams, to the point where Mr. Adams is on admission, I believe, he authorized Mr. Harris to sign his name to that contract to buy your property. And, and you had questions on what Mr. Wainwright was doing on their property adjoining you, and you went over and asked what was going on. And the court said, why in the world, I beg, why in the world would Mr. Wainwright tell Mr. Byrd to call Mr. Harris about what's going on on Mr. Adams' property? So clearly, the court found that, in, in your case, Mr. Harris was acting as a, as an agent for Mr. Adams. And I said it the other night, I still find it troubling that our attorney was involved in that whole mess. Our attorney was involved as the client's, as the attorney suing you during the purchase of the fire station's property. He was the attorney for that buyer. So I understand Mr. Prabat saying that, sir.
Mr., I thought Mr. Prabat was, was on it from the, from day one.
He was.
He was the one that made the complaint, the original complaint.
He, what complaint?
Well, whenever they got to file a complaint as to why I should be forced to-
Mr. Prabat was the original attorney for Mr. Adams when he started suing you to force you to sell that property.
And then he laid, then they laid down through that whole, you know, the fire station debacle.
I just said that, but, I mean, I feel sorry for you. My question for, for you is, what do you want us to do? You're asked, you asked for help? What do you, I mean, Mr. Harris is gone, the only one sitting up here that was involved in any of that is Mr. Prabat. He's the only one here. I don't know, I'm sincerely asking you, I don't, I don't know what you want. I mean, I'd love to help you. I just don't know what it is you want me to do.
I don't know if you have a way to talk to the judge. You know, there's, there's a, I mean, this whole thing's been, been unfair. And the, you know, the arms of justice just isn't there. I mean, I feel like I've been sitting front of a fire truck hose and just washed out, you know? And anyway, it's just like I'm fighting this, this monster's so much bigger than me. And part of those monsters was part of the commission at that time. And the, it was, like, Brian Meeks told me that there was, if you look at that map right there, I mean, I took that map to his office. And I asked twice. And I asked him the first time, when the red property went under contract, I said, well, what's, you know, what's, you know, is there anything going out here that, that I would wanna know about? Any kind of planning, any kind of land use changes? And he told me no. And then I was gonna make a decision between buying that other property that I've got highlighted there. And I was, a sign went up on it, and I was gonna consider buying, buying that if, if something was going on out there. And I also was weighing buying another 80 acres for only, you know, for a lot less money, but it's a lot less property. I mean, it's, it's, it's par ag, in which the judge used that as part of the, you know, part of his decision. But there was, there's no values whatsoever even close between par ag and CHI property that's getting a development brought in.
I mean, I totally, I get what you're saying, and I know you're passionate about it, because you feel like you were wrong, and I, I believe you were. I'm not a judge, I'm not an attorney, I don't practice law, but, I mean, I, you know, I said to David and Goliath, I feel bad for you. But I don't, there again, my question to you is, what, what can we do to help you? What, what would you like for us to do?
I don't know, maybe somebody sit down and talk to me. You know, somebody sit down that's in the government here and talk to me, you know, and then-
Well, Mr. Byrd, I understand that, but we're not a judge and we're not a jury, and I can't try your case, nor can I give you your land back. So I don't understand, and I'm like, Commissioner Land here, we got rid of Mr. Harris, so that, that's a non-issue anymore. So-
Well, it was at the time.
Well, I understand.
That's what brought my decision in.
Well, I understand that, but all I can tell you is what's, where we are today. And so I'm with Commissioner Land. I just wanna hear you tell me, other than trying your case, how it is you want me to help you? What is it you want me to do? Just tell me.
Well, I just, I guess probably, you know, with the, with the zoom, with this camera thing, I just kinda want the public to know that a citizen in this county has been seriously wronged by people that were on the commission at that time, and under the employ of Swan County. And I want the people to know that, that it can happen. It happened to me, it can happen to them. And when you go into the county and you're asking questions, you should get the, the honest answers. And I mean, Mr. Meeks is still an employee. I mean, personally, I like, I thought Mr. Meeks was okay. But once I figured out that, you know, that, it's like, you know, I show him that map, and he tells me in 2017 and 2018 that there was no land use changes, there, you know, didn't say anything about infrastructure. And I showed him that map, and he knew full well that there was infrastructure coming, and he knew full well that things were gonna happen out there. But when I showed him that map and that property, which is mine, mine is right there, and then also Mr. Redd is right there, which Mr. Redd is the one that started this, you know, when this went under contract. And I had a, I had a verbal first right to refuse. But things got lost in emails and some other people got it before I did. I was given the option, but it was, by the time I was able to answer, too late. Nobody can do anything about that. But his question to me was, from the, the real estate agent from, that was on Mr. Redd's property, he's the one that got me, he, he said, is there anything I wanna know what's going on out there? Is there something that's making a little bit of land action happening? And all I could think of was that festival that was in White Springs, that country festival that happened out there a few years ago. I mean, I, I didn't know. And like I said, after I talked to, I can't remember his name, Jerry, Mr. Jerry Schaefer, when, after I talked to him and we spoke, he, he asked me, is there anything that, you know, I mean, he's already signed contract and it was no big deal with him. But it's like, is there anything we wanna know? So I went up with that same question in 2017, about September, when Mr. Redd's place went under contract. And I asked Mr. Meeks. And Mr. Meeks said nothing was happening off that picture, which is bold-faced lie. And then I was negotiating with some people on some 80 acres across the way. And I was also, a sign came up on that other property that's highlighted there, and it was for sale. I called them, I was negotiating with one person on 80 acres, and I had called that, those people. And as you can see, Insight paid $370,000 for three acres, or a little over three acres. I mean, that's, that's an gassy amount of money.
Yes, sir. Let me, let me, let me stop you here just a minute, Mr. Byrd. I do feel bad for you, and I do feel like, yeah, you probably got scated on there. I surely do. But I, I don't, I'm like, Mr. Land, I'm, I just, I don't know what to do for you. I can't give you your land back. I'm not a judge, I'm not a jury. I don't, I don't have anything to do with that.
Kinda open the people step up and, and say something.
Yes, sir, but a judge has already ruled against you, and I know you got an appeal going here, but-
And that's gonna be, the first trial was estimated at 25, 35,000 dollars. It ended up costing you over 60,000 dollars, didn't it?
Yes, sir. And I, again, I understand that, but I don't wanna be here all night hashing this out. We already know what happened. We up here, we know, I assume everybody's aware of what's, what's going on here. And so I understand where you're coming from, and I do feel for you. I really do.
I'm hoping the people step up and, and give some kind of a voice for, for citizens being wronged by county employees.
Understood. Understood. Thank you, Mr. Byrd. I appreciate you.
I asked for your help.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go for Ronald White's seat, but just anxious to give this beginning's opportunity, which is-
I agree. Mr. Meeks?
Ronald Meeks, 18105, County Route 132. Um, it's kinda hard at the last meeting, sit there and listen to somebody calling you a liar. I may be a lot of things. People may not necessarily agree with my opinions, but I would venture to say a liar I'm not. I don't think that I have to defend myself at that point in time. I think the people who have known me for a substantial amount of time have dealt with me in my office, has always felt like I've handled myself in a professional manner. I've been respectful of people, and I've definitely not lied to them. The land use that Mr. Byrd is referring to, the best of my recollection happened in 2016, where we went to all of our commercial highway interchange, land use and zoning districts, and we re-identified them as employment centers. Some of those boundaries remained the same boundary, and some of those boundaries were expanded upon and included more areas that they didn't previously include. We went through all of the public hearings for adoption of all the text changes to the comprehensive plan and the future land use map amendments to the future land use map of the county. I do not know Mr. Byrd, I'd never met Mr. Byrd, but Mr. Byrd did come to my office, and he did come in and he did ask questions. Mr. Byrd was not necessarily clear with a lot of his questioning, but to the best of my recollection, what Mr. Byrd asked me about was specifically what amendments had taken place. I gave Mr. Byrd copies of the text amendments to the comprehensive plan and had him come back for copies of the maps of the areas. He, he wasn't interested in all of the areas. He asked me about two specific areas, the 136 and 975 interchange and the 129 and 910 interchange. He never told me why he was interested in them. I didn't even know Mr. Byrd owned property at that point in time until he started telling me that. But his questioning never involved about development. He asked me specifically what businesses are coming in at the interchange of 136 and 975. And if anyone on this board and in this audience tonight can tell me the name of a business that exists today that did not exist in 2016, when we adopted that text language, then I guess I am a liar. Because there are no new businesses at that interchange. The same ones that exist today existed then. My office, as an individual and as a professional for the planning and zoning department of Swan County, was not involved at all in discussions of utilities at that interchange. I was generally familiar with applications. The county was seeking for grant funding, but the locations of those utilities, I didn't know. So in my opinion, to lie about something, you have to know the fact behind it. So there is no avenue or means for me to lie to an individual when I do not have the knowledge myself. So with that being said, I think that that's all that I wanna say about the issue. But for this to be the second meeting to be, you know, basically called out as a liar, I, I was involved in Mr. Byrd's lawsuit that he had. I gave a deposition on the record. That's public record, anybody can read it. I was subpoenaed to testify at the hearing, but had such, in my opinion, such little to offer, I was excused and never even asked any questions at the hearing. I would have gladly answered them. But at that point in time, I mean, to be continually sit here and be called a liar, I mean, yeah, it's one thing. I mean, you don't have to agree with my opinion, but a liar is a different story. Appreciate it. I'll put it together.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Mr. Byrd, Mr. Byrd, is there anything that you got to add here because you've already got up and spoke one time?
All I wanna say then is that I did not ask-
To the mic, if you don't mind.
I mean, he's, I mean, all right, he's just gotta hold on to what he said, but all I can say is- say is that it was not two thousand sixteen, I did not come into his office until two thousand seventeen with Mr. Redd's property went under contract.
Look, look, I'm, I'm, Mr. Byrd, Mr. Byrd, no, I'm gonna stop you right there. And it's not that I have any ill feelings towards you at all, but I just, you know, I don't think sitting here arguing back with Mr. Fourth, with Mr. Meeks about who's a liar and who ain't here, when I already know Mr. Meeks to never have lied to me. So, I'm just gonna stop that, and we're not gonna keep on back and forth on this. I appreciate you coming, I do appreciate the situation you're in, but I think, I think that's enough of it. I appreciate it, thank you. And I don't mean that in a mean way, I really don't. Any other public concern or comments?
Bug slipper, one four five eight one hundred and sixty five, Lavo. The, I didn't get Mr. Byrd's first back. And one thing I am here to note, and I missed out on the, I was in and out of the room when y'all were talking about the elections, you know, Mr. Harris, sound like Mr. Harris, was a contractor for that job, or that revision, or remodel, or whatever? I, I know that I, I saw in some of the research I done, that line six of Mr. Harris' contract prevented him from engaging in any business besides county business. And, and if he did that, he violated his contract. And then, then appearing was the insight, the company, I just heard insight, Mr. Adams, if he was, and, and judge, actually, I had somebody that I've never seen in this room, or any county commission meeting, come up to me and handed me Judge Finnis' ruling, and the judge did, I don't have it with me, but the judge did declare, in every way I could conceive it, that Mr. Harris acted as Mr. Adams' or insight, which I understand that Mr. Adams is the sole owner. So, there, there's a conflict too. I think that Mr. Harris got, has beat this county up, you know, and he's taking major advantage of the taxpayers' funds. And I hope y'all don't just sit back and allow this to happen. I, I don't, I don't want to take advantage of taxpayers' money, and I, I'm not gonna sit by passively and, and watch anybody take care of it. I'm a whistleblower, I, I'll tell them, you know? You steal from the people, working people out there, there's people out there having a hell of a time, just getting a dozen eggs, you know? And then you got people that's being paid well, and then they're taking advantage. Hate me, do whatever you want to do, it ain't, it ain't, and I plead with y'all, you know, y'all can go back, I don't know how good Finnis' rule on this, but it sounds like y'all gonna try to get Mr. Harris, again, I apologize, I missed some of it, but I sure to hope six figures or more to repair his mistake, if he was a contractor on that repair, that, you know? And I don't see if you're gonna have to open that can of worms, I don't see why not go on back and retract his release with severance, and, and use all this for cause, you know? And, you know, it's, I, I don't know, I've heard other county employees that went through a near-death experience, and even though the scandal, which I've heard so much tonight, that, that they changed their ways, well, hell, I ain't seen it, you know? I'm seeing and hearing some of the same stuff, this, this individual's been accused of for a long time. It, you know, and sleeping with the enemy, it ain't a good idea. And there, there's gotta be other options out there, except for just, and I'm not shaming y'all, I, I can only imagine the tremendous burden each one of y'all have on you. And I don't want it, you know? But I see it, and, and I know when I'm involved in a project, people that's looking from outside can sometimes see stuff I can't see, when I'm building or fixing or something. And, and sometimes they get ticked, because they say something, especially sometimes the way they say it. And I ain't the one with some fuzzies, but the, I mean, we can't allow this to continue, you know? So, thank you.
Thank you. I didn't expect any less, Mr. Moses, by the way.
The only other thing I think is that I'd be a law enforcement situation, I think I'm hoping the law hears this, and somebody steps up, you know, the FDLE or the FBI.
Mr. Byrd, I'm not trying to shut you down, but if you're gonna speak, you got to come onto that microphone. But you might know, you've, you've already been up there twice, we're gonna be done with that tonight, we're done with that. I'm sorry, we're finished with that. Anybody else need to speak? Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to discuss on the body cams. I was raised up around police officers, most of my family is, in corrections, and I do feel like that they should take accountability, and every police officer wearing body cam, for the simple fact is, not all officers, even sworn in, do the right thing. They get a voice system, whatever, and they get away with whatever they want to get away with. And if they don't get caught, they don't even get slapped on the hand. You know what I'm saying? Unless you get a video or something like that. And, you know, I have a long day in this town, but I've lived in this community, and I came from Portland to Springs. And when I first got here, I had a similar situation, and I'm not gonna call anybody out, but they didn't take, they didn't have to take accountability because I didn't do nothing about it, even though I had a video. But he has one person he has to answer to, that's Scott. But that is an issue in this town, and he should really address it. And I love this town, and I have a lot of awesome, good people here. But, you know, when you have to move out of one home to another one because you're being intimidated by an official, something should be done.
Thank you.
It's another subject, I promise.
One minute, man.
Give me two. Still Moses, slipper. Y'all zoom by on Senator Adams, number eight here.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Are you going back up, and we're gonna discuss stuff we've already approved? Is that what we're gonna do?
No, I'd like to.
I don't see where that's gonna be.
I didn't get an opportunity to speak on it.
You true, true, you did.
Wait. Thank you. Only, when I read that, and then I went to the back papers on it, and I started reading on it, I mean, I, I know everything's gone up, double, triple, quadruple, five times sometime, but, so, run the numbers on some of them items, and I just did just a few of the items. I looked on there, I mean, I'm glad that three hundred thousand's come back, of course, but I looked at some of the six-inch items that was refunded. The most outstanding one, on the MJ ninety, we was charged and refunded, or gonna be refunded, fifteen hundred dollars. Well, I looked at the supplier, and that item was a hundred and eighty-four dollars. There was MJT that was charged and gonna be refunded four hundred and fifty dollars, and, and I found it for two hundred and forty-two dollars. A six-inch valve, gate valve, all right, for fifteen hundred dollars. And I found the valve valve, which is a far superior valve, for ten hundred and seventy-six dollars. So, there again, this might be nickels and dimes in the one hundred and ten million-dollar budget, but I guarantee you that if I was writing the check, that, that I, I would, I'd be concerned about this, and I, I believe that the people involved with this are some of the same people that had to do with Mr. Mobley's Tic Tac Box, you know? So, I, I ask y'all to either assign county employee, or, or y'all do your own, and backtrack on these contracts, and on these charges, and on these projects, that y'all go back until you find, find no wrong goods. And I don't think that's been done, and this is evidence of it. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else? Seeing none? Start with Mr. Scott, Administrator.
Just a few things to update y'all, making progress on the repairs of the landfill, house in order, the re-shake, making progress there. Had a great meeting yesterday with Secretary of DOT District Two, very warm, welcoming team that we met with, the tall house and generalities, I've run a few things from them, of course, more meetings going forward. The Lopetier County Commission has asked our special service officer, or asked the county, not officially, they went through service officer to service officer to do this, their service officer is retiring, or leaving the position, and wants us to go one day a week over there, to work on some numbers, and I want to talk to their person over there, see if the special service officer can get more input on time frames, and I think we'll hire somebody, or whoever wants to do it, whatever, but we've done it in the past, just we bring up today on that, just make sure you're aware of that. Great news for the Building Department, we've hired a electrical contractor, electrical inspector, we got to go through the formal process, and background checks, and everything, but excited about that. Great guy, great electrician, does good stuff, Mike Alton, and looking forward to getting his help with the Building Department inspections.
If he was gonna be full-time?
Yes, he would be, yes. It takes about a year to find somebody, so, he's a great, great camper, so, I would appreciate it, so, like, we're gonna kind of stay up to the bottom. That's all I got. If you have any questions for me.
Mr. Perkins, you got a positive comment?
Not a long time, but yeah, just had the opportunity to go to NACA conference, and enjoy the conference, and learned a lot, a lot of things here, and have a chance to go to the Capitol, and go down to Congress for Don's office, and I mean, some of his staff and talk with him, got some cars, it was supposed to meet with Senator Scott, but we had the president, he had about a couple nights he spoke, so by the time he finished up there, it was up to my time to get, to the traffic to get out, she was at the Capitol to be able to talk to Senator Scott, something, I think we made it there. But got a lot of information, and I think there's been a lot of people there, and enjoying those sessions, you know, we went on a session with agriculture, with Commissioner Mobley and myself, since when I committed agriculture and urban affairs. And there, after that, the agriculture, and a question in that session, and I see the name of a gentleman, both, right, and that was one of our young men here from Lavo speaking. So I got a chance to ask a question, talk to him, and he was from Lavo. Talking to Paul Beal, Paul Beal, because of Roger Day, also brought me, hearing the cousin speak about the American Relief Plan Act, and talking about the world, got some of those folks. Just found out there's a lot of funds out here, here from all the other people, Secretary of Finance, Gates, she was, as she spoke, we talked about all those folks out there, a lot of money out there that we tap into. We've got a new kind of thing that we need to tap into. So, we got a great time here.
What was that you went through?
The NACA, National Association, National Association of Counties.
Did we get a check?
No.
Were you swinging with the big guys up there?
I was trying to get a check, though. I mean, I got that while I was there.
Well, we appreciate you doing, thank you, Mr. Byrd. Mr. Mobley?
I appreciate everybody coming and being involved in business with Swanee County.
Mr. Land?
No, sir, nothing, nothing tonight.
Mr. Hale?
Just as always, like Mr. Mobley said, appreciate everybody coming, and definitely appreciate our staff and all the folks that work for the county, and I can't thank them enough for the work they do. I know a lot of times the public thinks we're behind the eight ball, but those folks, they go pretty hard to try to get things done, and special thanks to Ron Meeks, and Mike and Jimmy, we had a tough situation, Mr. Beadie, everybody jumping in this past week. Appreciate everybody helping out with Swanee County.
Thank you, sir. Has Mr. Byrd left the room already?
Yeah, he already left.
All right.
I'll go get him if you want to.
Well, it's fine, I mean, I just didn't want him to feel like I was running him down at any gates. We just, he's already spoke two times, and, and we're just getting here calling people names, and I just, I don't think that's gonna get us anywhere, so I just wanted to apologize if he thought I was rigged to him, so, but that, that's all I've got, and I just need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Land, second by Commissioner Hale, on the favor, I...